ARS 16-1019, temporary political signs are allowed within the city right-of-way only during specified time periods. And although I will touch briefly on political signs, they are not part of the overall presentation today. So currently temporary signs, what the city does allow. So we allow feather banners, and this is in our commercial districts only, up to 20 square feet. And the image off to the far-left of that slide demonstrates what a feather banner would look like. Immediately adjacent to that, to the right would be an A-frame, which is allowed also in our commercial zones, up to 12 square feet. And then below that would be a banner, up to 32 square feet, which is allowed in our commercial, or in our commercial zones only. Window signage is allowed in commercial or residential, and that's 50% of the window area. We do allow, and we do not regulate, any of the perforated-type window screening that you commonly see on the windows. They utilize it for advertising, or for advertising of their business, but also for sunscreening from the heat effect. And then real estate signs are allowed in our commercial or residential zones, up to a maximum of four square feet. And yard signs, commercial or residential, up to three square feet. And those are also pictured for you. Just for the general public's understanding, where can they place their temporary signs? So for business owners currently, temporary signs of the approved style can be placed on the business property, but not on the sidewalk. It can be hung on the wall of the business with the permit, in the window of the business, or in the yard of a house. Alternative options for advertising that the city does have, and really this comes back to more of the nonprofit organizations utilizing social media for their own purposes, but the city of Kingman does have digital message boards that are regulated through our city clerk office that does allow for nonprofit organizations. And I've just listed what the fees are for those types of events when advertising. There's been some discussions since we had some initial meetings in regards to our business extension zones, specifically along Beale Street, Andy Devine, our downtown district or corridor. A lot of these sidewalks and a lot of the businesses' frontages are with, actually, in the public right-of-way. So back in 2024, the city was directed, their staff was directed to come back with the business extension zone, which did allow for certain types of displays, certain types of eating areas, as well as signage to be allowed within that particular area. That is still regulated. It is regulated through a separate encroachment permit that is issued through our city's public works, or through our city's engineering department. So kind of moving forward, and just kind of taking a look at what's allowed in some of our adjoining or neighboring areas. So the city of Prescott, city of Prescott, billboards, prohibited signs for Prescott, billboards and other off-premise signage unless approved as part of a comprehensive sign plan. They do not allow for temporary signage unless it's temporary only until they get a permanent sign on-site, or if it's associated with a special event. Bullhead's a little bit different. Bullhead city does allow for temporary signs when they're specifically associated with a special event. The city does define what special events are. When they're needed a permit, they regulate the sign area. So if it doesn't require a special event, but it's part of a commercial or promotional event, they're allowed up to 16 square feet. If it's part of a city event or other special event, they're allowed a banner up to 32 square feet. And with their permits, they would allow them off-site. This is just the definition that the city of Bullhead provided for their commercial. Commercial or promotional event means an event that's less than 15 calendar days, where the primary purpose is to contractually sell or lease merchandise at a non-permanent sales location in the city limits, on public or private property, and the majority of the merchandise is sold or leased for more than $750 each for the transaction. This includes vehicle sales, boat sales, RV sales, or other big-ticket items. An event that exhibits merchandise and conveys information about merchandise, such as convention or trade show, but does not sell or lease merchandise is not a commercial or promotional event, and is a special event. And I think this is specific to Bullhead. In talking with them, they have a lot of the RV dealers and boat dealers that come in seasonally. They set up on vacant properties during that period of time. And so this is where we find that these particular permits come into play. Looking at the city of Lake Havasu, the city of Lake Havasu off-premise sign definition, off-premise signs, signs that advertise goods, products, entertainment services, or facilities at a different location from that of the sign shall not be allowed as accepted and identified in one of their tables, table 4.08. That particular table, I'll show you in just a moment, but basically it comes back, and it does not allow banners. It allows for other types of temporary signs, but banners itself are still restricted. It allows them only when they're on-site. It limits them to the square footage maximum, has to be mounted to the building, and they limit the type of banner that they can use. I did speak with their planning manager. Although they have numerous off-site premise banners and so forth, they are not permitted. So if you were driving through the city, you would see them, and you would think that they're permitted, but they are a non-permitted type of temporary signage. Mojave County exempt signs, the following signs would be exempt from their code, and really it talks about signs in any zone which are exempt, which includes banners, pennants, A-frame signs, portable signs, feather flags, and balloons. They can't be unlit, and they have to be basically limited to 24 square feet. So they will allow them, they deem them to be exempt from their permitting process or any regulation, but they are limited to 24 square feet. In my conversations with multiple of the groups that had come in and expressed a desire to really try and move this forward and look for alternatives to allowing for permitting, my direction was is bring us back, bring us back information. You know, we're a small department, we're an entity of a few, we're going out, we're doing the research as well. Some of those took that information, and they ran with it, and they brought back ideas, they brought back thoughts that we could incorporate into our process. And of course, when we do that, it really does come back to allowing, again, for the off-site premise signs. But one of those being the Gemstoneers Club, I know that they're going to speak today, but just coming back, they were really looking to try and make it pointed to where it's nonprofits, event-based type activities, charities to promote activities or events occurring within the city of Kingman. They were looking for to require for allowance for the off-site premise advertising, provided they had property owner's signature. It would permit signs, banners, to be ground-mounted or affixed to fences or a building wall, and would permit one per frontage per property. Corner lots would be allowed potentially signs and banners. They were proposing 15 days prior to an event with the removal within 48 hours after the event. They talked about permitting, permitting be at least 60 days prior to the event. The applicants were responsible for obtaining permissions, installation, removal, and then no more than 15 signs or banners permitted for any one event. So if you were to think citywide, if they were holding an event at the county fairgrounds, you know, they could have potentially, if we were to go with this type of permitting process, they would have upwards to 15 banners or signs citywide advertising their event. They went further to talk about some of the information that would be on their banner, that would be required, event title, event date, event location, and then dates and time of the events or durations. On the reverse side, applicant contact information, telephone, and website address. So that way, if they were still up, there would still be a contact information. I can tell you a lot of the illegal banners, the illegal signs that we come across from an enforcement standpoint, it is very difficult to track down who the underlying entity is that's placing them. So this would be good information to have. Just a little bit about from the legality standpoint. When we look at signage, we really have to look at signage as being content neutral, and that really comes from a court case stemming from 2015, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. So Town of Gilbert made itself infamous by this particular case, and how they wanted to regulate signage. And it came down to, it was a landmark case identifying how the city essentially could look at content on a sign, and also without infringing upon the First Amendment rights of those placing it. The ruling ultimately came back and said, cities cannot look at content. We can't look at different types of groups. If we're going to allow signage, we have to allow signage essentially for all. We can't base it on content, we can't base it on the type of entity that is advertising it, and so forth. What it did say is, we can regulate location, we can regulate size, we can regulate quantity, aesthetics, the durable material, and we can have permitting requirements. Again, I'll just briefly touch on temporary signs. Temporary signs, again, they come and go during the election periods. This year, we did adopt additional standards within the city zoning ordinance that further, I wouldn't say enhance, but we brought in the language that is in ARS that was missing in the city's ordinance, but we also required them not to be able to be displayed on fences. So being, holding true to our existing ordinance that's in place. So just a brief summary before I wrap up, and I turn it over to the public, I'm really excited to hear what the public has to comment, some of the ideas that they're bringing forward. But off-premise signs prohibited, based on the surveying of our surrounding cities and comparable areas, with that exception of Bullhead, for special events in Mojave County when it's under 24 square feet. There have been accommodations made for special events, however, when advertised, when the event is, and when, where the event is being held. On-premise temporary banner development standards vary with respect for placement, quantity, and size. So this is, again, on-premise being for the business that is established at that location. Those particular standards do vary from one jurisdiction to another. What we did find are common standards, triangular line of sight, so again, the safety aspect of it. Most of them required them to be all wall-mounted. We do allow wall-mounted, we also do allow them to be mounted just forward of the building, as long as all four corners are securely staked, and that they not be in the right-of-way, and not be on poles or other utility structures. Looking at some of the permitting requirements across the various jurisdictions, also looking at some of those in the valley, fees range from anywhere from $50 to $120. I will tell you, if we're implementing something of that nature here with the city of Kingman, that would put us at about a cost recovery of about 20 to 30%, depending on where we set that fee, based on the cost to provide the services. Other items that were looked at were periods of time, some allowed for fixed periods of time. You could have it up for 30 days, then you had to have it down for 30 days, not to exceed three 30-day periods in a calendar year. So they could essentially have 90 days to advertise. And others, again, came back, and they allowed for a range of anywhere from 60 to 120 days. And again, these are for on-premise signs. These are what's allowed for their existing business owners to advertise. But I just want to kind of give you an idea of what was out there, what they are allowing for the businesses, things that we can consider should we decide to get direction to move forward from there. With that, I'll take any comments or questions from council, vice mayor. If not, I will take a seat, and I will gladly await the public's comments.
Okay. Counselors, do you have any questions regarding the presentation or clarification? Counselor Dykens?
Off-premises signs are not allowed. Is that what I understand?
That is correct. Vice Mayor Savely, Councilmember Dykens, off-premise signs are prohibited in the city of Kingman.
So if a special event is taking place at the fairgrounds, and you drive down the road, and you see a sign advertising that, isn't that an off-premises sign?
That is an off-premises sign. Those signs are currently, based on the current ordinance, would be an illegal sign.
Okay. I just needed clarification on that definition.
Sure, sure. So...
I think if I could, if I, I'll give a great explanation. Cracker Barrel, the corner where Cracker Barrel is, Stockton Hill, there's a fence that is there. It's been commonly used, as well as the fence when you're exiting, I believe, out onto airway from Walmart. They are commonly used where they put their banners up on a regular basis. If you were to see banners on those fences, those are off-site banners, off-site premise signs. Two things, one, it's illegal that they're off-site, two, that they're attached to fences. So those are, those are common things for our staff, our neighborhood enforcement staff, to look for when we're doing enforcement. So when we see them on fences, we know that they're illegal, first of all, and second, that they're off-site.
I had a question about that. What if there is permission from the property owner?
So currently, based on our ordinance today, the off-site premise sign would be prohibited.
Even with permission?
Even with permission.
I'm thinking of, like, the dambar up at the corner, where they have the sign in the triangular area?
Correct.
Even with permission, it's still prohibited?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I believe that's why, I think when we look at what the Gemstoneers Club brought forward to us is obtaining property owner authorization.
Sure. Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments from council? Counselor Dykens?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Obviously, off-premises signs are not allowed currently. But do we allow for advertising of events not within Kingman? Meaning if there's an event happening in Bullhead and Laughlin, do we currently allow any type of signage in Kingman for their events? Because technically, that's off-premises.
Mr. Moquin, before you, before you answer, there's still some people in the audience that aren't able to hear. So if you can, I know I have to keep it real close because I have a little tiny voice. So if you could just speak?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilman Dykens, yes, that is the case. So other surrounding areas commonly do advertise in the city of Kingman, and they will place their signs, the small signs are either staked in the right-of-way, or staked off-site on private property, for events that are outside of the city limits. Those are still prohibited and illegal signs.
All right. Counselor Savage?
I know that there's signs that have been put out for, like, roofing and plumbing, and they're out-of-area businesses, but they're not marking any information other than plumbing and the phone number, or whatever. So those are illegal as well, correct?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Savage, yes. If that is the case, unless they're advertising it on the property in which they are doing the work, which is demonstrated in the lower right-hand corner, the yard sign for air control, they're doing some work there. They typically put that type of yard sign in the property owner's front yard while they're doing the work, and then they remove the sign afterwards.
Mr. Moquin, can you go back to what we can regulate in your slideshow? I think it was after Reed v. Gilbert.
From the legal perspective, yes.
Okay. That's what I was looking for. Okay.
And Vice Mayor, Council, something to consider, and Councilman Dykens brings up a good point. When we go to allow, if the potential direction is to allow for off-site signs, it would allow them for potentially any of those entities and businesses that are outside the city limits. So if it's an event that's advertising something in Bullhead, Las Vegas, whether it's, you know, the local gun show, or it's, you know, you know, an Easter service event, those particular events could be advertised. Again, that's where we come back to the Reed versus Gilbert. We can't control the content. So I just wanted to kind of make that known.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments? All right. We're going to start with a public comment. We have several people that want to address council. If you have already had somebody represent your permission, or, excuse me, your perspective, whatever you wanted to say, please just let us know, so we're not repeating the same stuff over and over again, and then that will help with time, and we'll be respectful of everybody's time. But we do want to give everybody an opportunity that signed up to speak to be able to speak. So with that being said, I will call up Dana Sandhop. Come on forward. If you'll state your name, because I may not pronounce it correctly. You do have three minutes.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
My name is Dana Sandhop. I'm with the Mojave County Gemstoneers.
Welcome.
All righty. Okay, so as we were sitting around discussing what's going on right now, I feel like maybe we needed a solid definition. And so I just simply asked Google, definition for special events. And so what Google AI came up with is a special event is a non-routine gathering of people, often advertised and open to the public, that takes place for a limited time and for a specific person. These events typically involve unique and noteworthy activities. So let me give you a little background of the Gemstoneers. We have been a club here since 1954, and we have advertised pretty near every single year. And we've been doing it the same way since. So which approximately about 70 years. So we thought, how could we help you guys? And so I thought, a very clear definition of the different types of signage that are going out would be a fantastic thing, and a great beginning. And so I'll just use our club as an example. We bring in a lot of people from outside of the town. We also bring in a lot of people that are in town during our show. Now, the key characteristics, infrequent and unplanned special events are not, not part of regular ongoing activities. They can be public or private. They may have, they may be held on public or private property. There is a limited duration. Special events are temporary occurrences lasting for a defined period. And specific purpose. They are organized for a particular purpose, such as recreation, celebration, fundraising, or cultural expression. Trade show and exhibitions, events showcasing, excuse me, showcasing products and services, often with a specific industry focus. This also includes religious events, ceremonies, festivals, and gathering related to religious services. Again, these are just temporary. So we can also go as far as to kind of categorize everything. And so there would be purpose, there would be scale, and setting. Oh, I guess that means I'm almost done, right?
Thank you, yes. If you could just wrap it up, please.
Okay, thank you. So by giving a clear definition of the example of what an actual special event is, we feel would be very helpful. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to call up Gary Bowles.
Bear with me, I have to read my own writing.
That's fine. Could you please state your name, please?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Gary Bowles, and I'm with the, I'm a member of the Mojave County Gemstoneers. I know this meeting is about sign ordinance overall, but I am speaking here today only on special event signs. My concern is not about real estate, political, business signs. I am here specifically for special events only. I assure you all received a packet that our group turned in to Jason at Community Development Services. I hope you all read them, and been able to review them. I would like to point out that after reviewing Reed versus Gilbert, that it has been clear to us that this is not so much a First Amendment right issue, as much as a sign blight issue, and to us that this is what we are dealing with here today. I know that this addresses some what is red light, Reed versus Gilbert, but we feel that over the last 40-plus years, what the town has been doing is working by not violating RVG. Then we need to address the blight problem. We are proposing it be approached much like the three legs of a stool aspect, with each leg needed to support the weight of the overall problem. So we start by creating a policy ordinance that is simple, easy to follow, sensible, and common sense. That's the first leg. Second leg is an easy-to-use and enforceable permitting process. And third leg is enforcement that allows for the violator or sign owner to receive a fine, not the business that feels compelled to support the community and special events. Right now, the businesses are scared. I've had many comments from them stating they've heard everything from they would be fined to their business license being taken away. Those are probably rumors, but that's what they're telling me, okay? But by allowing the special event signs to be placed on their property, you will find all this in your packets. We feel that this approach will go a long way in not just solving the problem, but help the divide that has occurred in our community today. We would very much like to see a workshop for special event signs only, and would ask that we be allowed to be part of it in the future. Time is of the essence, and this is a problem that needs to be dealt with in a very timely manner. We are here to help. Any questions? Thank you.
I do have a question. Counselors, do you have any questions? We can ask questions, right, Carl? It's not called the public. Mr. Bowles, how often do the Gemstoneers hold their events?
We hold our main event once a year, usually the first weekend of May, at which time we go out and get permissions for our signs to be hung on various properties from the property owners. And we put them up two weeks before and take them down within 48 hours. And we do that, but we've just created a craft fair for the local artisans around here, and that is probably going to be a four times a year.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And we do have our signs all professionally done by a local sign maker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next to speak, Cliff Downs?
Thank you.
If you'll state your name, sir.
I'm Cliff Downs, with the Mojave County Gemstoneers. You've all heard of a community event, but they may mean different things to different people. Primarily, they're all about people, gathering locals and visitors for an event that often celebrates mutual interests. The interest that I represent lies with rocks and geology. However, the ideas outlined will apply to any community event. Community events can promote learning and skill development. They can expose people to new ideas, perspectives, and information, as well as different ways of thinking, doing, and being. Community events can also enable people to acquire or improve their skills and knowledge, which can enhance their personal and professional growth. Some specific benefits are as follows. Exhibitions provide opportunities to learn about geology, mineralogy, gemstones, and the art of lapidary and jewelry making. Some exhibits may offer workshops and hands-on learning experiences, which increases the understanding of the natural world. Exhibits also expose attendees to diverse specimens from around the world, as well as collections focused on locally available, unique gems and minerals. Exhibits foster community engagement by bringing people together who share a passion for rocks, minerals, and related crafts. They can be instrumental in attracting cultural tourists who contribute significantly to the local economy through spending on accommodations, dining, shopping, and transportation. Showcasing specimens and sharing knowledge, clubs contribute to the preservation of cultural heritage related to geology and earth sciences. Rock and mineral exhibitions can attract visitors to local communities, boosting cultural tourism and creating a positive economic ripple effect. These visitors support local businesses, such as hotels, restaurants, shops, and transportation providers. In conclusion, rock and mineral club exhibitions provide a multitude of benefits, fostering education, community engagement, and cultural preservation, while also contributing positively to the economic well-being of the Kingman community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve Eubank? Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Oh, wonderful. Thank you. All right, Roseanne Rosenberg? Welcome, ma'am.
My name is Roseanne Rosenberg, and I'm here to share the crafts fair side of temporary signs. A crafts, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
A crafts fair... A crafts fair is an event where people sell handmade items. It is a venue where artisans and craftsmers showcase and sell their creations. These items are often unique, handcrafted goods. The events can range from small, local gatherings to large, regional, or national events and may feature a variety of crafts such as jewelry, pottery, clothing, and artwork. The craft fairs take place, on an average, once a week or twice a month. Typically, we find the local community, the business community, and tourists in our city by hanging banners in strategic places. Banners are the most efficient way for us to inform the public. They can go up one week prior to the event and be removed no later than 24 hours after the event. We have had great success when the banners are on a main thoroughfare and on business properties. With the business owner's permission, the business tells the community they support their residents. When the local community benefits from these activities, we are able to support our families, local business, and pass our town's history on to tourists who visit Kingman from around the world. We hope our process is an example for your search to make temporary signage available for everyone. A small craft group, we follow a simple set of rules. The size of the banner, the message which we make easy to read and succinct in content, and the means of hanging or displaying the banner. And you guys have those, okay? Who we are, what the event is, where it is, and the time. The grommets and the clasps keep the banner from leaving the assigned place. I would like to compliment both Jason and the Gemstoners because they hit on more ideas than I have here, so, so thank you. I'm good.
All right.
Questions?
Ms. Rosenberg, I do have a question. Councillors, do you have any questions? Councillor Savage? I just, I want to confirm, I see on the material that you provided us, your event is the second Saturday of each month, so that's as often as your organization holds events? Okay. All right, thank you. Councillor Savage?
I missed a button. This sentence kind of provokes me in a, to think a little bit more. The craft fair takes place, on the average, once a week or twice a month. That's almost a permanent fixture, then. I don't know if I, so what you're saying is, are you rotating those banners every time you have an event to change the dates? So you're occurring expenses on banners every two weeks?
Well, there are some groups that do a weekly, and I guess maybe I shouldn't have included them in this. Our group does it once a month on the second Saturday. Some groups do it every Saturday, so they would be responsible for their expenses.
Are they here to represent themselves today? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good catch. I didn't catch that. All right, thank you. Taffy Igley? And I apologize if I butcher your name. It's not intentional. Okay. Welcome.
I actually have a co-speaker here. This is Mark Bechtel. He is the owner of Mojave Markets and I'm, we are both here representing Mojave Markets, which is an event that takes place right now, once a month. We are attempting to make it
It's currently every two weeks.
Currently every two weeks. The reason why we would like to speak today is, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. I wanted to let you know, we do have over 750 vendors that have signed up with us since we started in January. That's 750 small business owners, local artisans, and folks in our area that create items to sell at our markets. I would like to mention to the council that since the enforcement of the banner ban, we have noticed a plummet in sales and foot traffic. This leaves us scratching our heads because we advertise on many forums such as radio ads, local link ads, social media, and posters similar to this one right here. And we are discovering that, from customer reviews, that they are not seeing or hearing any of these ads. They don't even know an event is taking place unless they drive by and see food trucks out front. And then they want to stop and see what's going on. And obviously, that's really hurt our foot traffic in recent months. The thing that we are concerned with is that we are aware and we understand that banners come with a safety concern. However, we don't see much of an enforcement taking place in other establishments that continue to maintain banners on their businesses that far exceeded the allotted time in the city. Just driving in here today, I counted no less than 14 banners, signs, and feather flags that remain up on Stockton Hill Road year-round. Leaving these signs and banners up tells us, small business owners, that it's okay for the bigger businesses, but it's not okay for us. Please reconsider the ban for people like us. Our livelihood is at risk. And it's not fair for us to see, continuing to see businesses that continue to break the rules. And we are the ones who actually need the advertisement most. As a small business owner, I beg you to reconsider the ban. Please allow us to put up banners and we promise to take them down in a timely manner. I personally will make sure that Mojave Markets banners are taken down within 48 hours. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, councillors? No?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, next we have Ruby Golden? Oh, Robin Gordon. My apologies, Robin. Well, so is mine. I knew it had to be you. Welcome, Robin.
Thank you. Good morning and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here representing sounds of Kingman. We're a local group that has been in existence for about 15 years. We do concerts in Metcalf Park during the summer months. We do six concerts. And then we also have a program called Our Time, Our History, where we have speakers that speak about historical items and those are held at the Mojave County Library. I'm here this morning to urge you to draft a new ordinance or to amend the current ordinance to allow temporary signs to be displayed throughout the city and on business properties. This would include a timeframe for signs to be displayed a number of days prior to the event and removed a number of days after the event. We think it's important that you get permission from the property owner to hang the sign on their property. We think those signs should be commercially produced and made to be securely attached or displayed. We also think that contact information should be on the sign. That should include the name of the organization with the event, name and contact telephone number, and also a website if that organization has a website. Nonprofits support our community. As you can see from the turnout today, this is an important issue to Kingman. This is your opportunity to support their efforts. I understand that in the past, some of the signs have added to the clutter and trash to our community. I don't support that. I think that we want the community to be clean and I think by making clear and concise rules about these banners, it will attribute to that. With that, I would ask, answer any questions you have of me about our participation.
Councillors, any questions? So my question is, Quan, I just, I'm trying to get a pulse on how many organizations, how often are you wanting to put up signs?
We have six concerts during the summer months and we have between three and four speakers during the winter months.
Okay, so it would be 10 occasions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And it may vary by one or two depending on how, you know, how our schedule works.
Okay. That was my only question, thank you.
We've done a lot to improve Metcalf Park. I wanted to bring that up, too. Since we've been using Metcalf Park, we raised the money to put the cover over the stage. We also paid for a bench to be placed in the park. And just recently, we finished a beautiful mural on the back wall of the bathroom. So it's important to us to add to our community and I think we've done a good job doing that.
And we thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
All right, next I'll call up Michelle Burleson. Good morning, welcome.
Hi, Michelle Burleson. Mine's not going to be as long. So just a clarification, I'm a real estate agent. So for open houses, our open houses are very short windowed, usually a three-hour timeframe. So am I hearing it correctly, like we cannot place an open house sign during that time? It sounds like that that is not allowed. So I'm asking if, is there any leeway on that since it's a very short timeframe? Usually, like I said, nine to noon, you know, noon to three, but it's our only way to drive traffic in on those type of things. So I just want clarification on that.
Okay. Any questions from councillors? No?
Thank you.
All right, Brandon Pease. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. Appreciate you doing this workshop, taking your time to hear from the public. We appreciate that quite a bit. So Branson Pease represent, representing Angle Homes. I just wanted to touch on a few things. One, as far as how with the temporary signs, it does have an extending reach into a lot of the new communities. And so that's why we just kind of wanted to talk through that a little bit. When it comes to signage, there's obviously a lot of value with signage. We have a community just south of Kingman in the county and we're building two homes in there right now. And this community has just as much marketing equally to all the other communities. Mainly, the only difference is because of its remoteness and the lack of signage in the area. We are not able to sell those homes. It's a real challenge. And we're actually considering buying, we're considering buying 40 lots, but we're seriously considering not doing anything there anymore. And so there's definitely an effect of not having the right signage. There's also another home that's sitting in one of our most popular communities, Southern Vista. And that's the only difference is it's just hard to find the signage. So the value of signage definitely has, has an effect for residential development, new construction. For us, we would hope to encourage maybe a reflection on adopting what other cities have done. I think we've, we've looked at other cities quite a bit. I mean, St. George is one we look at often. With that being one of the fastest-growing cities in the country, we're looking at some of their regulations they have. And it would really help if we can maybe come up with a section specific to residential development, new home, for that signage. There's a lot of good feedback. I mean, we're not wanting to tell you how to set those regulations up, but maybe just looking at those to adopt some of those. They have obviously gone through the pain and the sacrifice of what it, you know, the growing pains that it takes to develop and work with all these builders. And for example, they have signage that, you know, starts at 32 square feet. St. George actually has a bigger square footage allowance. And then they have like action flags. They allow four action flags per new home community. So just small details like that, I think it'd probably make your jobs easier to be able to just maybe look at what others are doing, adopt that. But yeah, thank you for your consideration and time on that.
Thank you so much. All right, Nicholas Diaz? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that feels compelled to speak that didn't have something already spoken about what they want to say? Come on. Come forward. State your name.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Sheldon. I'm the church administrator for First Southern Baptist Church of Kingman. And I just noticed a couple of things that I would, coming from a different angle. When the signs were taken down from Cracker Barrel, I heard from the, from employees there that they were discouraged, that they couldn't show that their support for the community. But then a couple months later, you see that fence absolutely covered in those political signs. So it's like, it was very enraged at the moment to be like, okay, so that's more important than supporting local people is to make sure that you tell people that you're running for an office, which I disagree with wholeheartedly. But also, the perception of the importance of what the city is saying can go up and can't go up from, from people who don't know how the city runs and things like that is negative on the city. It says, okay, that's important, but we're not. And I kind of got the same feeling with the Route 66 Fest. You can go past Lewis Kingman Park and it says, has like five signs to say one sentence and you can find that in three or four locations. It's a city event. Why can't anyone else do that? So at least the perception is negative from people that don't understand how the city is run. So inaction at this point would probably not be in the benefit, but I understand the caution of not like opening the door wide. So I actually felt the Gemstoners' suggestions with everything, having the owner permission was a really good compromise, making sure that it doesn't blow up, but making sure that you're opening the door a little bit. My only suggestion to Jason was, don't have it go against the 30 days of like the owner. Like you have 30 days to advertise your stuff with temporary signage, but if you're opening it up to a nonprofit, maybe don't, don't punish them for that. And yeah, so that's all I had to say. I was just like, if you guys don't do something at this point, it just makes it look like the city's saying, well, our stuff's important, but your guys' stuff, you have to figure something else out. So I just thought I'd caution, that's how the perception might have been.
All right. Any questions, comments from councillors?
Might have sounded harsh.
All right. No. Honest. Thank you. Appreciate you. Yes, come forward.
Thank you very much for the time. My name's Becky Hill and I'm with the Kingman Route 66 Rotary Club. And I just wanted to say, we have two events because it sounded like you were trying to count events. And they are our primary fundraisers and we donate a lot back to the community of Kingman. And we would completely endorse having a special events seminar where the nonprofits can get together and we work on how we can do special event signage in Kingman for those temporary events. And I think the Gemstoners did a great job. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you so much, sir. So we are last speaker.
Hi, my name's Alan Arnesto. I'm here representing myself at the time. My goodness, somebody's trying to call me right now. Basically, what I needed to bring forward is I am one of the small business owners in the area that actually deals with a lot of these farmers' markets. In fact, I pretty much rely on them having their advertisement out and about to draw people to come and see my product. Now, we've got a little bit of a, you know, my family's been doing coffee for about 100 years. We've been bringing it up to the United States for only about the last five, six years that we've been doing it mainly here in Kingman. And due to these farmers' markets and events, I've been able to get that family history out into the public. And it's been something that I've been able to use, the fact that, you know, we have Kingman here, that's Route 66, it has all these tourists coming in. And, you know, it's part of the excitement of these people coming in, knowing that they're getting local handmade products from here in Kingman along Route 66. It adds to their experience, other than going to just Walmart or name your other big brand, you know, out there. So I do believe that having this signage up not only assists, you know, with the experience of the tourists, but it does help for this new surge of small business owners that have started, new entrepreneurs that rely on some of these larger events to get their product out there. But thank you. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Comments?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Mokwen. I'm sure you took copious notes, as did I. So we'll compare. Go ahead, sir.
Nice chair. Thank you, council. So I did take a lot of notes and I'm going to recap what I'm hearing from the public is supportive of allowing offsites, supportive of a permitting process, supportive of supportive of allowing offsite, supportive of permitting process, supportive of timing, duration limitations, timing in the advance of putting it up, removing the banners within a certain period of time afterwards. That was, I think, the biggest consensus.
Can we get you to talk more?
I can.
We're still...
So the biggest consensus is having a permitting system, regulating the time in which it can be up, the duration in which it can be up, how soon it has to come down after the event, perhaps looking at how do we tie it back to special events? Because it seems like a lot of that, a lot of the organizations really are special events or community type events and so forth. This is where we have to be careful in regards to that content neutral aspect of it. And, you know, we may defer to our city attorney just a little bit as we go forward. Couple things that I wanted to address with respect to representative from Angle Homes. The city's current adopted sign ordinance does have specific standards that already are in place that regulate signage for subdivisions and real estate signs, for single lot development as well as for subdivisions in itself. So they actually do have quite an assortment of signage that they can use to promote the sale of their homes with respect to the individual realtor. The individual open house signs are silent in our code. By accident, by purpose, they're silent. So we have not been regulating open house signs. What is allowed is the, and regulated in the code is the actual sign that goes in the front yard of the house, which is for sale. And again, that's not, a permit's not required, but it is regulated by the code in regards to size. And I think when I'm hearing, really, it is coming back to, they are looking for offsite signage. So that way they can advertise their events on private property in a manner to attract, you know, patrons to their events. Did I miss anything? That was my summary.
No, very well done. Counselors, Councilor Walker.
Yeah, I think one thing we need to touch on this is placement of the sign, so it's not side disrupting traffic while you're trying to turn. That's probably the only thing I think we missed.
Okay. I have a couple, but go ahead, Councilor Savage.
This is concerning the A-frames. I'm glad the open house thing is good with me. I've seen businesses use little A-frames and don't place them always directly in front of their business. They'll put it down on the street corner, this street corner. Where's the regulations with that? Are those temporary, but they're doing it every day?
They are temporary, and again, they can be placed within the commercial zones. They can be, they are to be placed within the frontage of their business, and they're limited to 12 feet, square feet in area. A permit is not required. So if we were to drive by and we see one way down the street, we would like to stop and make contact with them to bring it in and get it in front of their business.
Okay. Secondly, and this was kind of touched on, I know everyone and their brother, mother sees that fence coming out of Walmart. Does that business owner give everybody permission to put those signs up there that you're aware of?
I can't speak to whether or not they have permission, Councilman Savage. I can speak to the fact that on the average, prior to May 16th, when we rolled out the enforcement, which we did suspend pending this meeting today, we were removing anywhere from eight to 12 banners between Cracker Barrel and the fence coming out. And it was a constant enforcement issue. So just as soon as we'd get banners down, we'd get banners right back up. We did approach that particular property owner and ask for permission to remove them, specifically the Cracker Barrel, to remove them at will, so that way we didn't have to interrupt their business. And I know that although he was not in favor of it, he did ultimately give the city staff the ability to do so. The property owner that's coming out of the Walmart, we have had made contact with that property on numerous occasions, and they have just not been cooperative.
How would we handle something like that to the regulations?
So typically, Vice Mayor, Councilman Savage, typically we would write a notice of violation. It starts out with a 30-day letter for them to come into compliance. Once they're not in compliance, if they're still not in compliance, it's either a follow-up letter, or we're having to now create a case, build a case. We send it to the city attorney's office for prosecution, for an abatement order. And again, with the number of cases that our officers are undergoing today, we also did not have a proactive enforcement area until we initiated that earlier this year. So that was not one of our higher priorities until we really looked at how much blight we had in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Can we pause for just a second? Ms. Rosenberg, do you have some, you'll have to come up to the microphone, please.
I hate to go back to the Walmart fence, but prior to all of this, had we, anybody wanted to put a sign up there, they could go to that business owner and ask. They gave us permission, now a lot of things have happened, so...
All right, thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. All right, couple things. Councilor Deacon.
I'm probably gonna repeat a lot that's already been said, but that's my notes. Okay, we've got a lot of different participants, gemstoners, gun shows, craft events. I've got a better understanding on the open house, real estate, and the residential advertising for new homes. But as the code currently reads, every one of these things are illegal. And apparently, we have little to no enforcement, because they're all over the place. Gun show signs, I saw a bunch coming in today. Obviously, we ignore them. Maybe we don't have the manpower to go clean up or whatever. But as spending most of my career doing code enforcement, what's a sense of having a code or an ordinance that we don't enforce? So I'm not in favor of enforcing that, because I believe we do need to change the code dealing with off-premises signs, because I can see the benefit, especially for the small business owner and that. But a comment that was made talking about the clutter and the trash, and the fact that we need clear and concise regulations, is very important to me. I can see, this is one way, but I see the other way, too. We get too many of these signs up, and it looks like trash. And it, and it's awful. The coming out of Walmart by Cracker Barrel, a lot of that I can see as important for, it's a good spot to be seen, but because you can't limit who you advertise, now we have 15 to 20 signs, and it just makes it look clutter and trashy. So you have quite the job in front of you to try and figure out the fine line between the two. The frequency of whether they're doing advertising monthly, weekly, bi-weekly, twice a year, that's a big issue, because once you get doing something weekly, I agree, is that really a temporary sign? Or is that more of a permanent advertisement? I don't relish your job at this point, but I am in favor of change.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I appreciate the applause, but we're gonna keep moving forward. Did you have a question in there, or just a question for Jason?
I guess there wasn't a question.
No, it's fine. I just want to make sure we didn't miss it.
Am I allowed to make a statement without a question?
Of course.
Because I'll make up a question if I need to.
Of course.
I'm good, okay.
Yeah, of course. I just, I just want to make sure. Councilor Ward, did you have some comments?
Not really. I agree with what Jim just said. I took notes on everything that was said, and I understand where the people are coming from. Frequency, some regulation, we've got to have something. We can't just have what we've been having.
Right.
But if we, our code, the way it's presently stated, is over aggressive, in my opinion. We need to take a look at it and see, make some adjustments.
All right, thank you. I had, I had just a couple of things. Feather flags, they are allowed, correct? How many are allowed on a property?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, currently we allow four feather flags. They're in a commercial zone. I believe it's one, Heather's looking real quick.
There's no number limitation?
No number limitation in the code.
Okay, and there's no quality of sign?
For the, for the feather flags, correct.
Okay. So it could just be a pole with some tattered material?
Which is typically what we see currently.
Okay. All right, but there's currently no number. Okay, that was a question I had. You said in the open house signage, in code, it's silent? So translate what that means to the public when it's silent.
Certainly, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. So when it is silent in the code, the code does not address it essentially from our perspective, because it's not mentioned, it's not something that I'm out there enforcing.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right. Might be something to look at. I mean, it's fine if it's silent. Now, commercial...
With today's discussion, it does open that Pandora's box. So yes, we do, we do need to, because we have to treat everyone equal.
Sure.
Without being content, and still remain content neutral. So those are things that we would be looking at when we come back.
Okay. So on those same lines of open houses, what about garage sale signs? Are they also silent in the code?
So garage sale signs are silent in the code?
Hence why they're everywhere. Thank you. Okay, so again, I'd like to see that addressed. There's been a good point made here today that I definitely agree with, and it sounds like council's on board for sectioning. So if we could do like a subsection for events, and maybe a subsection, you said that there's real estate residential development, and that's under a separate section. So maybe you can get with Branson and show him that and see, you know, if that's sufficient. But I think that we need to section, we need a subsection for events, and I think that would help. Commercial property, let's say a real estate agent wants to put a sign up on a commercial property, is there any signage size requirements?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, it would be limited to four square feet currently for residential and commercial.
Okay. All right. And then, let's see. I would, I am in favor, I do want to compliment the gemstoners for what they have put forth. It sounds like council's in favor of a timeframe before and after. I wrote contact information needs to be put, quality of the signage, quantity. I think that we could do something, it's in the list, Carl, that we can regulate quantity.
Time, place, manner, quantity would be included in that.
Okay.
I would have other comments, but I won't address them now.
So I think quantity would help. So, I mean, we could, we could get with the community event stakeholders and maybe, you know, identify some areas. And then definitely, I think that if we're gonna do an application with a fee, I think that it is absolutely pertinent that we get permission from the property owner. So, and that is submitted with the application, so that number one, the property owner knows there's, there is some responsibility there, and that the event coordinators know that they're held to that standard with the, not only the city, but to the property owner. I think that's all I had. Oh, can you tell me, there was a comment in one of the public's requests for the 66 signage, the 66 Fest. Can you, can you speak to that a little bit? I know they do the Burma signs along the way, so can you talk about how that's looked at and the decisions that are made?
So Vice Mayor and councilmembers, I will tell you that I've had conversations with other directors that have been allowing events that are either park-related or community-related, and letting them know that they still need to adhere to the same sign code that we have in place. So they should be essentially adhering to the same code, and am I correct?
Correct.
So you are helping to hold the directors of the other city departments accountable?
When this came about, yes, I had reached out to those that I knew were in violation. One, we did have a park event being advertised on the Cracker Barrel fence. So yes, we are holding ourselves to the same accountability. Again, pending today, we did cease enforcement in regards to any of the temporary banners that were up. We have not taken any further ones down. I think the word has gotten out, and I think that's why they haven't really been going back up readily anyways, so...
Okay. And then, Carl, do we have the ability to, I know we can't say what's on the sign, so we can't just limit the sign to, as the gemstoner said, you know, location, date, time, event title? Can we put that somewhere so that's a part of, that's all we want to see on the sign?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. All right. Counselors, do you have any other comments, questions? Councilor Savage?
Jason, I don't see this in droves, but it has to do with commercial property, especially retail strips. Some are horizontal with the street, some are vertical with the street. And yet, do those business owners have just their space in front of their business? Or do they use a common area, example, Stockton Hill where Home Depot is, there's a retail strip that goes vertical to the street? And their flags are all out on Stockton Hill instead of in front of their property? How, how does that come about?
Vice Chair, Councilman Savage, yeah, when you get into the multi-tenant commercial centers, it is very difficult to enforce. Signage is supposed to be immediately or directly in front of the business in which it's advertising. Those types of businesses having feather flags, in theory, would be offsite, because most of those parking lots are actually a separate parcel. So they're actually not associated with the parcel that outlines the building footprint.
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you, Jason.
Councilor Walker.
Yeah, Jason, going back to real estate signs, you said four square feet? Or was it two square? What would you...
Vice Chair, Councilman Walker, currently it's limited to four square feet for real estate signs, and it doesn't differentiate between commercial or residential style.
Okay, I'm wondering if we need to look at that, because some of these larger bare land, you know, they're sitting on acreage, and just a little real estate sign's not gonna do it for them. And I know they're already doing it, so maybe let's get them in compliance, and let's look at, see if we can make that bigger?
Certainly.
That's a good point, Councilor Walker. I was gonna ask that, when we are looking at the open house silent ordinance, we can also address, so maybe there can be a subsection for real estate in there? So we'll have a subsection for events, and then maybe a section, you said residential development already has its own place, so maybe...
Right.
Okay.
And they do, it is onsite signage, though, so that's why they have their own section.
Okay.
So Vice Mayor, council, councilmembers, I think what I'm taking away here today is to really come back, work with city attorney as to how we can define a path forward to allow for the offsite signage. And it may be coming back and truly defining a special event, and maybe requiring a special event permit, which may require changing other portions of the city's code. I'll certainly work with city attorney when it comes to that. But we have a very narrow scope when it comes to Reed versus Gilbert, so we will certainly be working closely with our city attorney on that. I think today, I was coming forward to ask for direction, specifically in a couple areas. One is, which I'm hearing today, is do we leave the ordinance in place with no changes? And clearly hearing, we want to come back and revisit it, as well as other areas. The other portion was to take the comments today and come back with an ordinance that does deal with standards, time, location, and so forth, specifically to allow for the offsite banners, was that to allow offsite banners only? Other forms of offsite temporary signs, such as the...
such as the feather banners, the A-frame signs? Because again, as we start, we start allowing one and then I don't want to be back, you know, with those that want to do temporary banners or temporary A-frames only. So I'm asking for direction. Do we want to look at all of it or limit it to just banners? And then lastly is fencing. Are we allowing on fencing? Or are we allowing it to, to where it's individually staked and so forth? So I'm, I'm asking for some clarity and direction. It allows us, from, from a staff perspective, to narrowly try and craft an ordinance that works, but is also easily enforceable, especially for our staff that's out there looking, you know, when we're driving down in, in the proactive areas that we've identified, if we see them on fences, we'll know that they're, they're an illegal sign.
Okay. Councilman Walker and then Councilman Savage?
I'm good with fencing, as long as they have the owner's permission. I don't know how everybody else.
I agree with that.
I am too.
Yeah. Is that all? Councilman Walker?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Savage?
Boy, if I owned the fairgrounds, I'd make a lot of money using that fence. Just saying. I think where you have mass conglations, I think it needs to be uniformed. Because someone's always going to try to outdo somebody else. Example, having a feather flag as opposed to a banner. Then it starts looking tacky and you don't want to keep one upping everybody. So I am firmly behind of having more uniformed ordinances for that purpose.
Staff would prefer to limit it to a single type, if that's the direction.
Cool. Thank you.
Well, so I don't, I don't know that, based off your comment that you just made, are then you looking at eliminating feather flags and just going to a banner?
With respect to the offsite.
With respect to the offsites. Okay. All right. So that would be somebody in a strip mall that doesn't own the property, their feather banners would be in violation.
Right. I think.
Unless, not even with the property owner's permission. Because I feel like we're, then now we're limiting it. Because most of those, most of those big areas, those shopping centers and things are owned and, and managed by a property management company. And so, you know, they, they have no control over that. So I, I would like to look at that a little bit more. I, I don't, I don't want to limit those businesses that may now, the way it looks. That I'm in favor of. But I, I, I don't know. Let, let's see what that looks like. Do you guys have any other comments on that? Councilor Deikins?
I am not totally sold on signage on fencing, just because of the clutter and the, the way it ends up looking. But if we do go with signage on fencing, I agree with Councilman Savage with a uniformity. That way, you don't have one advertising with a smaller sign and then another person coming in.
Whoa.
Use my hands. And another person coming in with a, you know, a 40-square-foot sign or banner. If signage is allowed on fencing, to me, I agree it should be uniformative. But I still struggle with the fencing.
And I, and I, I agree with that as well. So if, if there could be some specifications for signage on fencing, making it, you know, uniform, I, I feel like, based off of the events that are held, I don't think it's going to be an, an issue for it to be cluttered if we can get it uniform. Same quality of banner, you know, same, you know, I know we can't limit what's said, but you know, you know, get it, get it as uniform as we possibly can. So I apologize. Is, is it appropriate to ask the, if we have comments from the public to come back up or?
Well, you, we're, we're kind of done with that.
Okay.
I mean, but if you.
All right. I would suggest those that raise their hands, get Mr. Mokwen's contact information.
They're at the table.
At the table. And, and he has a nice stack of cards over there. Please reach out to him. So the public portion is, is closed. So I think you have good direction. Council, do we have anything else we want to add? You need anything else?
I just want to thank you and your staff, because I know this is a ongoing, everything else you have on your shoulders, I appreciate you guys.
And I want to thank the public that came out. I felt that this was a very, going to be a very important topic to discuss. And it, it does affect our community events. It affects, you know, our cottage industry folks. And I definitely think it, it needed to be addressed. And so I'm, I'm happy to see that council is on board to do something. So what that something looks like, please stay engaged. And I appreciate everybody that came out today to make a public comment. Jason, do you have anything else for us?
Nothing, nothing more today. I've received direction, no motion needed.
All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.